Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here. Please be advised that the notice of requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied that in the annual notice, we should give sufficient notice of the time and place and contact of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, as the law of the city clerk has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board in the city hall and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the home news studio. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, perfecting, and just as for all.
Please join me this afternoon in a moment of silence in memory of Vanessa Doncic, who passed away on April 30th. Vanessa was an active member at Emmanuel Lutheran Church and managed Vanessa's food pantry at the church for many years. She was also a founding member of the Feeding New Brunswick Network. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. But I'm sure has the correspondence being directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office have been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
City Clerk?
Council President, this is the time fixed for the public hearing on the 2023 municipal budget. The budget was approved by the governing body on April 5th, 2023, was advertised as required by law on April 19th, 2023, together with the notice of the hearing for this time. Printed copies have been made available to the public during the past week and is available on our city website.
At this time, anyone who has no secure copy of the budget may do so now. And at this time, I will ask the clerk to read Resolution 0523008, entitled only.
By the Municipal Council, whereas NJSA 40A:4-8, as amended, provides that the budget as advertised shall be read in full at the public hearing or that it may be read by its title if, at least one week prior to the date of the hearing and at the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget, A, shall be made available for public inspection, and B, shall be made available to each person upon request. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the New Brunswick City Council, that it is hereby declared that the conditions of NJSA 40A:4-8, as amended, set forth in subsections 1A and 1B, have been met and therefore, the budget for the year 2023 shall be read by title only. Be it further resolved, that certified copies of this resolution shall be sent by the city clerk to the following, the city administrator and the chief financial officer. Thank you.
Motion. Motion to adopt?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Okay, at this time, before we open the public hearing, I would ask Mr. Jules, can you please provide us with a overview on the 2023 budget, please?
It's my pleasure. Council President, Member of councils, the proposed budget for 2023 has been submitted with a total expenditure of approximately $107,855,000, supported by a municipal levy of approximately $38,138,000. This budget brings into balance the economic impacts of the rising inflationary costs with the needs of providing essential services, all while expanding programs for our residents. It's compliant with all statutory and with all statutory imposed spending and levy caps. The budget funds the hiring of 10 new firefighters and five new police officers. The police hires are made possible in part through a community-oriented policing services, COPS, grant from U.S. Department of Justice. Based on the success of the 2022 Teen Litter Program and Seasonal Hiring Program, which expanded the city's workforce during peak demand times, keeping our streets clean, trash collected, and parks trimmed, this budget will fund 10 additional seasonal employees in parks and three in DPW. 2023 will bring the completion of construction of newly renovated Feaster and Pittman Parks, the start of construction of a new park downtown at the site of the demolished Wolfson parking deck, and the opening of a new dog park at Boyd Park totaling nearly $10 million in new parks' construction. I should note that the dog park will have its opening this month. When visiting any of our parks this summer, be on the lookout for information or a helping hand from one of our city's new park rangers. The nearly half a million dollar program seeks to hire and deploy two full-time and six part-time shifts of outfitted park rangers, vehicles, and equipped to patrol our parks and improve the experience for our park goers. In this digital age, local governments have an obligation to harden our digital systems from cyber attacks and adopt new technologies to improve virtual access to government through the Internet for its residents. This budget provides over half a million dollars in new hardware and software purchases to upgrade servers, firewalls, and expand communications. The New Brunswick Senior Center, the New Brunswick Senior Resource Center, Virtual Vitality Joy Tablet Program and the City's Dial-A-Live Program continue to be offered through a grant from Parker Health Group. Through this partnership, these programs continue to connect our seniors to healthcare resources, social programs, and services. The welcome spring weather begins to start the city's annual milling and paving program with a healthy cost sharing provided by state and federal grants actively sought through this governing body. In some instances, these projects will also include an upgrade of city-owned underground water, sanitary, and storm sewer utilities. The city will purchase a new ladder fire truck and next-generation battery-operated rescue tools for emergency vehicle extraction totaling over $1.6 million. In addition, the city is making approximately $900,000 investment in new heavy equipment, including a new garbage truck, a variety of heavy-duty trucks, and other equipment that will further mechanize our processes and allow our DPW to take on more in-house construction projects to improve our street sewer constructions and parks. The city's water utility will soon go out to bid to procure over $5 million of specialized treatment equipment to expedite the construction of upgrades of our city's water treatment plant that's expected to break ground in the next 12 months. With the help of $22 million in funds from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act and low-interest financing from the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, city rate payers will benefit from the implementation of an advanced and highly resilient water treatment system that will continue to exceed all New Jersey and federal drinking water standards. The plant design also accommodates future treatment technologies to address continually changing federal and state water treatment regulations. Once completed, the set grade will also increase the plant's output up to 5 million gallons per day to support increased demands from city and outside customers. The tax rate increase of 4 cents has been proposed for this budget, resulting in an annual increase of approximately $97 for the average property owner, who is defined as a property assessed at $261,819. Thank you for your consideration of this budget. With me is also today, amongst all the department heads, is our CFO, Richard Mulroney, and our auditors, who are glad to help answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jules. As a reminder, before we open the public portion of the meeting, I just want to make you aware that the council welcomes a diversity of views and opinions. As such, and to be able to conduct an orderly and effective meeting, please be reminded of the following. Please provide when you come up to the microphone, provide your name and address. You have five minutes to address the council, one time only, for instances. You need to direct all questions to the council president, and then they will be referred to the appropriate municipal official or any of my colleagues. Refrain from disruptive or disrespectful behavior during the meeting when somebody is talking in the board. Refrain also from demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior, and the use of inappropriate language towards any council member or a member of the public. Questions regarding the budget must be confined solely about the municipal budget before us. School or county matters are not proper subjects for this meeting and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. I now declare open the public hearing of the 2023 municipal budget. Anyone who would like to speak, you may do so now, for up to five minutes per person, one time only. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Daniel North, Somerset Street. First, my question is, is it the same budget that normally goes through in July, or this is a different budget?
This is the city budget.
Okay. I know usually goes through July, so this is the same thing we're talking about?
This was just Mr. Ford.
Okay, thank you. Now, okay, my question is, due to why I heard you say, okay, we're getting five new officers, police officers, are they replacing officers that retired, or are these extra that are coming in?
Mr. Jules?
There are some that are replacing officers, and then there are some that, because of this grant, they were not budgeted, were able to hire them at the DOJ's paying for it, so.
So will we end up with more officers?
Yes.
Okay, well, I hope to see some more work done by the police department, because I'm not the only one. I say we do need plenty more police officers, even though I don't see our own police officers doing what they should be doing around New Brunswick. Then the next thing I will speak for is with the Parks Department, with the dog park down there, I heard you mention, due to where I did speak to Mr. Victor, who's supervisor of the Department of Public Works, I spoke to Mr. Sal, who's head of the Parks Department, due to where I don't know if they got back to the city council yet with the budget, due to where at the beginning of coming in with the doggy park, due to where how its entrance opened there for city employees or the police department to come through, but as of now, due to where it's been cleaned up, I'm seeing vehicles that do not belong to the city, how people are driving through the park to go out to the other entrance, due to where I take those too serious, you know, Mr. Sal, he always listens to me, but like I said, something's going to have to be done there to stop the vehicles from riding through the park that are not workers or the police department.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Anything else on the budget, first?
Well, that is part of the budget, didn't you, I don't know why you always try to maybe like I'm not talking about budget, did you say about the dog park?
The budget is the money that would be used, that had been used for that? Your concern is a valid one, but it's not related to the budget, but I.
Well, that's what I said, well, that wasn't what I, like I said, I was told down there when I met with everybody, all the engineers when I was down there, I'm hearing two different sides of what was going through, just like I said with the cameras before, due to where somebody is not cooperating right, where saying the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel.
Then I'm glad to hear that we do have more workers for the park department, because like I said, wow, I'm glad to see that, wow, especially Boyd Park has been cleaned much better, but due to where we have the wrong type of people in our neighborhood who keep dirtying it down there. I hope the cameras do go down there, like I said, to stop people from dumping their garbage down there, and to where I'm going at the county as well, due to where too much garbage that's polluting the river and the canal down there. That's going to be a city issue where I hope that the city does look into that as well, due to where extremely too much garbage. I provided the evidence, like I said, that will be tomorrow to the county, due to where they have to step up as well, and either removing their poles down there at the river, or they take responsibility in cleaning up all that garbage down there. I know a lot of you don't walk as much as I do, and CC was much as I do, but like I said, I'm glad that, like I said, that parks there will be, hopefully, it will be more taken care of. And then the last thing I have, due to why I spoke on, please, I expect that a lot of our trees be trimmed this year, due to where we have been having extremely forcefully wind, God bless, we've been lucky, what, nine tornadoes that hit New Jersey out of the past two months, it's been extremely windy, please, I would love to see that our trees get trimmed throughout the City of New Brunswick, for safety issues on owners and people who are just walking through or traveling, because I don't see it properly done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Any else on the budget?
Yes, please. Good evening, members of the council, Charlie Cradaville, Dam Street, Brunswick. I wanted to start by responding and asking a few questions about Mr. Jules's remarks on the budget. I do not see the police director here. Is the police director present?
If you don't see him, he's not here.
Okay, well, I believe Mr. Jules stated that all the department heads were here today. Is that accurate statement or inaccurate statement?
What's your question, Mr. Cradaville?
Was Mr. Jules's statement inaccurate when he said all the department heads are here today?
The department heads are here today, except the police director, which you know that he doesn't come to these meetings. Go ahead.
Right, so he's special.
Anything?
He's the only one. He hasn't been to a meeting in 10 years or more.
Anything on the budget? Thank you.
Well, I just want to point out that inaccurate information that we got already here today. I wanted to ask about the teen program that we discussed. This is to help out the efforts to make New Brunswick clean and pick up litter. I wanted to ask, are you still contemplating having the program like last year where folks will be asked to fill in on the back of garbage, riding on the back of sanitation trucks? Or is that no longer being done?
That's inaccurate, but Mr. Jules would like to respond to those issues.
So to clarify Mr. Cradaville's question, I think he wanted a little more information. The Teen Litter Patrol is a group of teens under the direction of a city errant from our Public Works Department, and they go to different areas of the city and they run cleanups, and they did a very successful job. They were real proud of the work they did, and will be doing that again. We also have seasonal workers in DPW, they who help clean up the city, separate of the Teen Litter Patrol. So I think you've got your groups mixed up.
And I apologize for that. Erin does do the work.
Hey, we both misspoke.
But there you go. But at the end of the day, I do want to confirm, are teenagers, people under 18 specifically, still going to be in that seasonal position, riding on the back of garbage trucks? Because I believe that's a violation of federal law.
Obviously, that is obviously that we're not doing that, and.
Didn't it happen last summer?
Yes. So the best of my knowledge, I'm just going to ask again, please, anybody from the public, do not disrupt the meeting, any comments? And if I have to take, you know, if you choose not to adhere to the rules, then you will be respectfully asked to leave the room. Thank you.
So I'm just asking if that happened last year?
Mr. Cradaville, can we have any questions on the budget, please?
I'll move on. There were also remarks about the Wolfson Park. Does that mean that we can expect that new park to open in the next six to 12 months? Or is this going to continue to lie fallow?
Are we expecting to have the park yet? No, it's part of the budget.
We're expecting to break ground and get the work done. We move as quick as we can. You know, we're at the whim of the weather. If we can get it, we hope to get it done this year. If not, just like Feaster, as soon as this season opens up again, we can get back to work.
Next question's on page 4A, Middlesex County/NBPA pilot. I'd like to understand what that is for, what are they paying in lieu of that?
I'm going to ask to defer to Mr. Mulroney.
Mr. Mulroney? Mr. Mulroney?
It's page 4A, sheet 4A, towards the bottom, there's Middlesex County/NBPA pilot.
Yeah, that's not a pilot, that's in this year's budget. There's no dollar on the prior year.
That was from last, yeah. Okay, what was it for?
That was a, I believe, had to do with grant related to a building that the county was.
The Wellens Plaza? Sorry.
I just want to keep the.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I believe. The only project I know of in the county department is Wellens Plaza, maybe we can confirm that. I do want to move to sheet 9, code blue. I see $90,000 for last year, zero for this year under revenues. Are you expecting to get the grants from the county? And is the city prepared to step up and put any more funds at all beyond $90,000 with the code blue program?
We are expecting to receive the county funds, that's why it's not there. And in terms of the city, I don't have the authority to say whether yes or no, Mr. Jules?
Just to add a little more detail to your point, the grant period hasn't opened for application for the 2023/2024 season yet. That's why it's not in here. And that's the only information I have regarding code blue.
So there's no other allocations being made? This budget includes $0 for code blue, is that correct?
No, like we said, zero dot, we are waiting to be open, this is a process to apply for it.
So it's not in the budget, so there's $0 in the budget for code blue.
Because there's not the time to apply for it yet.
I'm just guessing the city actually put up some of our funds, the city funds to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
May I?
Thank you.
May I continue?
Time's done.
You don't have any other questions?
Five minutes, thank you.
See you later.
Appreciate it. Anybody else on the budget?
Hi, my name is Lundy Store for the 12th Park Boulevard. I had some of the same questions that have been brought up, but particularly, I was wondering if the five police officers, because of the grant that they're paid under, would be trained any differently as community police officers? Maybe, you know, more mental health, cannabis land, or de-escalation crisis?
I am aware that the police officers, once they're hired, they go through a stream training, mental health is one of them, how to deal with situations. So that's across the board. All of them receive that training.
So there's no special, these types of police officers will be just trained as?
As, they will be trained, and they receive a very extensive.
It's not a specific program?
No, no, it's just part of the, yeah, but they will receive an extensive training as all of our officers do.
Okay.
Mental health and how to handle crisis.
And how many are replacing retiring or leaving officers, and how many are, will be additional?
Do you have that information, Mr. Jules?
Sorry, I don't have that handy.
Okay, and the firefighters are replacing? Is this due to attrition, or will there be additional firefighters?
Through attrition.
Okay, so no additional?
Correct.
Okay. So for the homeless situation, it had been mentioned to me that the city thinks that the churches should step up and do more about the homeless situation, but I think a lot of the churches are struggling to keep their doors open at this point. And I actually think as a concerned And I actually think as a, as a concerned citizen, as a taxpayer, um, maybe most, uh, maybe most other taxpayers would not agree with me, I don't know, but I think it would be worth reaching out to find out. I think most of us would like to see some money invested on the part of the city in addition to the grant that comes for Code Blue. But Code Blue really isn't a solution to the problem of the homeless people, or, or unhoused people, but Code Blue doesn't give anybody a house. Um, and, you know, in the long run, in the bigger picture, um, even if you didn't care about people not having a home, it's cost-effective to provide them a place to live and not have all the other costs that are associated with people not having a place to live, um, and not having adequate shelter. So, um, yeah, I was, I was wondering why no effort was made in this area to address anything? I had thought that maybe some of the abandoned properties, which is a great program, so we could, you know, reclaim those abandoned properties and get them fixed up and everything, but I had hoped that, um, you know, some of that would be, um, you know, used to, to shelter the, um, the house. And, um, I mean, yeah, it might cost some money, because obviously they can't pay market rates to live in the house, but, but I just think that these are things that would be really worthwhile and, um, increase the quality of life for the whole city. And I think that there are things that most of the citizens want to see addressed, because, um, it is, it is an ongoing problem. I also want to know with the improvements at the water department, um, would there then be drinkable water in all the schools? Cause I saw pallets of, um, water bottles at one of the schools on collection day. And I was like, ooh, that's not great. Um, that tells me somebody that worked at that school says, yeah, they can't, haven't been able to use the fountains, um, for years, you know, or I don't, I don't even know. Um, there was an issue even when I worked there, but sporadically and only certain fountains would be closed. But now this would put enough water in the whole school, I don't know. But, um, but hopefully with these improvements, whatever the problem is with getting, you know, clean, um, fresh water to the students to drink, because, uh, you know, water bottles just can't be the solution for, for, I mean, that's, that's like an emergency measure if something happens, but that, that can't be the solution. I'm hoping that this addresses, thank you, Mr. Doolis.
Anybody else on the budget, any comments, questions?
Yeah, hi, this is Brockers student. Um, I just wanna, I'm curious about a couple of things. So in terms of the cops grant, how much money is that?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Morr, if he has a number handy.
Yeah, the total is approximately $2.2 million over five years.
$2.2 million?
Over five years.
Over five years? Um, so was that about, wait, $2.2 over, maybe like $200,000, $300,000 a year?
$400,000.
$400, yeah, thank you. Um, so I just wanna remind everybody, like, the police budget already is $20 million a year? Like, why are we giving them more money? I really don't understand that. Um, the, the woman just before me kinda mentioned, like, are they gonna be specially trained or anything like that? Um, if anything, like, why are we just putting that money to actual mental health services? Why are we putting that as the duty of the police? Um, in terms of the garbage truck, where's that coming from in terms of budget?
It's part of the, uh, improvement into the parking, I mean.
Okay, um, how mu-
It probably works.
It probably works.
How much, how much money is that gonna be?
Do we have an amount, is, is that estimated?
Uh, Mr. Valenti's here, can you give your real number, or give me three seconds and I'll look it up? Mr. Valenti?
I don't recall the exact number, I think it's $3.50, $3.80.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just wondering if we're thinking about raising the wages of our sanitation workers? Um, like, I think that's more important than giving them a new truck first. Um, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Krista Cunningham, I live at 217 New Brunswick. So I have a little, separate question. First of all, I wanna ask, uh, about the grant that was received for the police officers who are in the front of justice. So it was mentioned that this is, how, how much was it again?
$2.2 million.
$2.2 million, over five years, right now. So that's only for five years. So after that five years is, um, who will be paying for those additional police officers?
If, if they're five years, the cost of it will be on the city. Um, there's also within those five years, uh, attrition, so we plan around that attrition as well.
So respectfully, I'd like to point out that these are poison dollars, right? Because these are just dollars for five years, and then we, the taxpayers, will be expected to pay for these police officers to, so to say that we are not paying for these additional police officers is misleading and misguided, right? So I take serious issue with that representation. Um, and I also wanna voice my deep concern, I don't think we need additional police officers. My personal experience with police officers in the city has been very negative. I've had police officers harass me after stopping, seeing, or, I stopped and I saw a black woman who was being harassed by a cop, this has happened multiple times, and I sat there, I recorded it, and the police officer got in his vehicle and followed me home, harassing me, okay? I've also had New Brunswick police officers continuously, uh, pull over black people in my neighborhood, bringing them to my apartment complex, harassing them, taking them to jail. It's not right, okay? I've also seen them literally use these fancy toys and weapons that you keep letting them buy, talking about how right outside of my door, right, is they're about to use, talk, let's talk about mental health first, okay? You wanna say the police officers are there for mental health?
Can, can you just, I, I really wanna hear that?
Mm-hmm.
Can you just talk a little bit about the budget in terms of the money right now?
This is about, this is about the budget, because this is about what you're spending the budget on. You are spending the budget on more police officers, and I am telling you the story of why I do not believe you should do that, okay? Talk, the police officers, we are told that they're there to take care of people's mental health, okay? They called up a wellness check on my neighbor, right, who happens to be an African-American young man, they came out with little riot shields and an AR-15 to a wellness check, okay? And I heard them outside their door banging, and they were discussing, oh, wow, so-and-so gets to hold the AR-15, wow, they're so cool, they're so awesome, oh my gosh, well, he's the only one who has a seat, I don't know why so-and-so was mad that he got the, they took these as toys, right? I heard them though stuff, I heard them talking about it, they then proceeded to break into the, into my neighbor's house in the middle of the night, pulling the AR-15 onto both of the individuals in the apartment, who both happened to be young, black and brown men, okay? And then they proceeded, after doing this wellness check, where they literally woke them up in the middle of the night, pointing guns at their faces, obviously the gentleman had a, a breakdown about it, what would you feel if you woke up in the middle of the night with guns in your face? They then proceeded to literally drag him by his arms and legs out of the house, okay? And then when the police officer saw that I was recording the incident, he literally, he turned to the officer, he said, go put that AR-15 away. So they know very well that they should not be doing what they're doing, right? These are the stories of everyday life in New Brunswick, this is what these police officers represent to us, and I do not want more of it because of the trauma that they have caused in my community, I don't wanna see it anymore. I'm tired of being harassed, I'm tired of my neighbors being harassed, I'm being harassed and I'm fucking white person, right? Just, I understand that you want a certain level of decorum by having a very passionate, okay? And I have the right, freedom of speech, to express myself how I want, thank you very much, alright? Alright, that's all I have to say, except more about Code Blue, you should be funding that more, not police officers, and also get a grip, stop relying on NGOs, you're the government, do something about it!
Thank you. You have free speech, but I have the right and to conduct a meeting in a manner that is effective and is orderly and is respectful. I respectfully ask you to not use any inappropriate language, thank you. Name and address.
My name is Jacob and address 57 Mary. Uh, I have a question, how much money is being allotted to the joint insurance funds?
Mr. Doolis, do you have that information, you want me to move on to?
Give me a moment, maybe go on, I can come back.
Do you have another question, while you look for that information, please?
Um, I, I guess, I guess my, my question is, um, how, you know, how does the, the joint insurance fund, um, this is where the money is coming from to pay for council member Glenn Fleming's sexual harassment case, this is all, uh, I just wanted to know, is there a certain cap on that? Um, cause supposedly this case is ongoing, and considering Glenn Fleming's defending, there will be hourly bills charged to New Brunswick, so I wanna know, is there a cap on how much in 2023 the New Brunswick taxpayers will be spending on this case, on funding someone's sexual harassment case that is not, has nothing to do with his job as a city council member?
So the exact number, I, I don't have a, I mean, I'm glad to get that for you, it's, it's a billed amount. Um, the, uh, we pay based on our assessment at the, at the beginning of the year, we get a bill, and we pay it for the year. Um, the actions of the JIF are the actions of the JIF, so.
So are you, so the, the amount that you would give me, would that be the amount that you gave for the 2022?
That'd be amount that in 2023 we budgeted to pay for our premiums for 2023.
Okay, so you pay at the beginning of the year, from that is?
We get a bill for the year, and then two payments through the year, some, but what the budget does is it cap, it captures all the costs for that bill for the year, it puts it to one number. How we pay it depends on when we get invoiced.
Okay, so basically what I wanted to ask is, when the, when Glenn Fleming's defense attorney submits his bills to the city council, um, how much, will, will that be allotted, a certain amount, or will you guys pay as much as it is?
So, we don't get a bill for any defense. The JIF is a separate ag, separate agency, separate entity, they determine what they pay and don't pay. We pay for our insurance once a year, similar how anyone would for auto or any other home policy, and whatever the claims are, that's managed by the JIF. The city council has, does not pay any of those bills, except authorizing the payment for the annual premium.
Okay, so it's a different thing, sorry?
So it's a different process than what you're thinking?
So, so the, but the JIF is what is paying these defense bills, is that correct?
The, well, any, any, any claim, right? Any claim against the, the city at this point?
That's right.
So there's no other money allotted in the budget, other than the JIF claims that would be paying for that, is that correct?
The JIF premium, the JIF premium.
Premium.
We don't pay claims.
We don't pay for claims, we pay for the premium in order for them to file and, and, and do the, and process the claim.
So do you think it's proper to continuously fund the, the JIF if it's paying for the defense of a council member's sexual harassment case that has already been stated, that has nothing to do with his job on the city council at all? Is that like, is that something appropriate that the city council should be paying towards a JIF that's supporting us?
Again, our responsibility is to pay for, you know, for a premium, for an agency that is representing all claims, regardless of, you know, just one.
Yes, well, like, is it, well, my question is, for my, I guess, I guess maybe this is more just my opinion, is that you shouldn't be funding a JIF that is, that is defending a council member's sexual harassment claims that has nothing to do with the city council, they should be paid by him out of pocket, they shouldn't be paid by the taxpayers. Taxpayers shouldn't be funding a, a public official's sexual harassment claim that has nothing to do with this job in the, at, in the city council. I, I don't think that the JIF should be something that's continuously funded, if that's where the money is going, George.
Thank you.
Council President, if I may, there was some discussion about the funding with the DOJ grant, um, I think it's important to note that during those five years, it gives the city the opportunity to plan for, as those police officers enter our future budgets. And we use the term attrition, but just for, for the public to understand, that means if we have retirement coming, we can start to slot these places in. And I, I got the impression from the question that these are just gonna be added on in five years, well, that's, that's not the case.
Thank you. At this point, if no, anybody else is not coming up, if anyone, uh, felt the care, that we are closed?
Motion?
Motion to close, motion to close the year.
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have resolution R05-
Madam Council President, I'm sorry, just for formality purposes, can we also get a motion to, uh, postpone the adoption of the budget until a future date?
Madam Council President, I move the adoption of this budget to be postponed, pending review by the Division of Local Government Services in the government body.
I see.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Council President, with respect to Resolution B, um, it's determined that resolution is not necessary for council action, so I would ask that the council pull that resolution.
Can I, do we need a motion to?
No, you don't need a motion.
Thank you. Okay, so, that's it, moving to?
Which one did you say?
That's the Resolution B, that's the one, the same one. So at this point, we have, um, an ordinance on first reading, ordinance 052-301, is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 10, 020, handicap parking, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons, we are adding 259 Hale Street, 78 May Street, 92 Forest Boulevard, 54 Wright Place, 76 Walton Street, 224 Power Street, 117 Wright Place, and 3 Hay Street.
Move ordinance setting down May 17, 2023, same date to be advertised.
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have ordinance 052-302, is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, this is a reference to parking meters, additional parking and change of traffic flow on Moore Street.
I move the ordinance setting down May 17, 2023 at 5:00 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, and then we have ordinance 052-303, is an ordinance for the temporary closure of George Street between Albany Street and Bay Street from Sunday, May 21, 2023, to Sunday, November 5, 2023.
I move the ordinance setting down May 17, 2023 at 5:00 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have resolutions 1 to 29, before we go into that, I just wanna give a few updates. Um, I was asked in previous meetings whether the New Brunswick Police Director lived in New Brunswick, to the best of my knowledge, the director was here, lived in New Brunswick, and he is a full-time director. Um, rent control obtained, as I stated in previous meetings, the council recognizes the concerns of our residents regarding the rent increase. This is a complex issue, but one of great importance to us, and we will continue to actively consider the best possible practices to address it, take it into consideration the concerns of all impacted by it. We also recognize that this must be brought up to a conclusion prior to the 2024 rent control rate setting action set to occur in the fall of 2023, and we are committed to bringing it to a close before then. I was asked about, again, about the Woodbridge, um, power plant, I had done a, a, an update before at a previous meeting, I'm gonna say it again, after the in, an inquiry from Mrs. Storelove from the New Brunswick Environmental Commission, the council revisited the request of having a resolution supporting and not, not supporting the plant. The council, after a poll, the council decision of not supporting a resolution remains, as per the majority, this decision was made on the belief that it's not the role of our municipalities interfering in the decision-making processes of another municipality. The council understands the concerns raised about the potential impact of the power, power plant, but also feels that it is important to respect the autonomy and authority of other city governments. This decision does not preclude individual council members to their private capacity to support enrolling the opposition of the plant. The New Brunswick Environmental Commission was also encouraged to do so, and this response was given to Mrs., um, Swerzo on February 23 of 2023, so we did, um, follow on that. Uh, again, uh, any members of the council would like to make a comment before we go into the resolutions? So at this time, we are preparing to over the meeting, to probably comment on the resolutions only. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wishes to speak on the resolution, please approach the council.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, Summer Street, first amendment act 19. Okay, would you tell me what type of uniforms, uh, for the workers that they will be getting? Is it what, regular uniforms, rain gear, women's gear, what kind, uh, kind of surprise?
With the global?
Council President, they're the same uniforms they're gonna receive, and sorry, I prefer each of the, what, what a free zebra?
So they have rain, rain gear, and everything included?
It's part of that too.
Oh, okay, can be. And then, this were 29, what I was talking about with the city camera, would you please tell me if, uh, is for certain parks, does this have to do with, uh, like I was mentioning before, cameras about the void park, the, the, the watching people from dumping all the garbage down there, and what, what else is respecting the park? So would you be able to tell me who void parking put with these cameras?
I, I can tell you that the, the cameras, the authorization purchased, the cameras are included in that resolution, um, we leave it up to the police to determine the right place for the cameras based on their activity and their expert opinion, so I, I don't know, I, I don't know where they're putting them.
Okay. Well, I surely hope, like I said, after our workers did a lovely job in, like I said, cleaning it up because of the dog park down there, due to where I showed the pictures already, I go with, with the city, honestly, I would have brought them in, due to where, wow, the people we have that you let get away, as well as the police department get away without ticketing, leaving all their beer and all their bottles down there, going in the water, how the workers have to work twice as hard with cleaning up down there, due to where, do I have to bring the pictures in? I surely will. So like I said, I was told by Mr. Victor, Mr. Sessao, that it was gonna be cameras down there to start watching the people dumping, and I meant a huge amount, due to where, wow, who wants to say the water's clean? Oh, no, it's not clean, cause like I said, I did a major video o, over the weekend, and like I said, that's going to the county as well, but I will bring the pi, pictures next time down there, so I surely hope you put the cameras down to the park as well to stop these people, what, leaving all their beer cans, all the garbage down at there, they don't have maid service, but like I said, due to where, what, you and the police department let these people do what they want, it wasn't like that, when it used to be New Brunswick before, I don't see you taking things ser, seriously based on color-wise, and like I said, please, after the workers are busting their behind, I meant, wow, it's gorgeous down there, you, we can't believe how many more people are coming due to there, due to where, what, last year, nobody, we came to the 4th of July, it stunk down there so bad, it was messy, but like I said, the difference, wow, it's beautiful, it, it's clean, like I said, let's not, these people ruined our park, park. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Doolis. And then, another one, due to where, that's, uh, this were a little fun, fun, I say, 225, is this one for the public, public to do, the artwork?
There's a, uh, some are on the floor, yeah, on the street.
So it's just public, any, anybody?
Anybody could go, yes, it's a colleague, uh, it's gonna be outside.
Okay.
Try to remember, if you remember mine at the time, I think it's from 11 to 3, and he's, you know, inviting the, the public to be there, yeah.
Okay, well, sounds good, something I'd like to do, art, maybe, I, I, go go and have some, have some fun there. And then that's the, uh, the, the next one is number 20, the last one, you can tell me, uh, basically what that is?
Mr. Morr, Morr, right?
Sure, that's an annual inter-level service agreement that we have with the Board of Education, um, it covers salaries for youth, social services, work for recreation, parks, uh, not parks, including parks, about, you know, garbage, so it's, it's in every level we do every year with the Board of Education.
Well, okay, due to, I heard you mention social work, but I had said, maybe-
Social services.
Social services.
YSS.
YSS, Mr. Daniel. Oh, oh, okay, I misunderstood, but, but okay, that's, that sounds good, okay. Alright, that's all I, that I have to ask for.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
One, one more, sorry, 26, what is the rebid for, what are you rebidding for? 26.
We are being trying to kind of re-arrench and kind of help to put this chamber in, in better shape and that it works better. So we are, for the past couple of years, we're trying to do, make it better for everyone. For the public, you see that the space is kind of limited, so we're trying to reconfigure in a way that it doesn't, that it keeps a historic part of it. That's part of it too, so that's what we're trying to do, Mr. Daniel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Charlie Cradaville, welcome, welcome today. I wanted to ask about the agreement with Milltown, number twenty-two, for water supply. That agreement is picking up where the prior agreement expired, December twenty twenty? Wow, what took so long to come to a new term?
You want Mr. Wallace, or you want?
Mr. Wallace or Mr. Licamelli, either.
If you could answer that, please.
Yes, Michael Licamelli. We've been operating on the extension of the contracts, so that's been standard procedure for the best twenty years or so. We have a good relationship now with Milltown and other towns that we supply bulk water to, and this is a very fair agreement on behalf of both the City of New Brunswick and Milltown. And New Brunswick is recouping a lot of the costs that have gone up over the years, and we have not been able to memorialize that.
Thank you, Mr. Licamelli.
Thank you. And I think this is the first time I'm hearing from Mr. Licamelli. Can I understand what his role is?
I am the New Brunswick Water Equity Business Manager.
Thank you. And I did want to ask, what are the terms of the bulk water agreement? Is it going to be a flat rate for ten years, or is it going to go up each year? What is it, and how does it compare to the prior agreement?
Mr. Licamelli, you have that information?
Yes, between twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we have a nine percent increase, and there is a three point five percent increase for the next subsequent four years. This is a good agreement for the city.
Now, when you say three point five percent increase for the next four years, that's one increase that would come in the end of this year, or every year, three point five percent?
As I said, was three point five percent subsequent increases of that every year, an additional three point five percent.
Okay.
Thank you.
And approximately, how much bulk water do we sell in Milltown every year?
How much water, Mr. Wallace? I should know that, because I asked that question and you told me about it, but.
Yeah, it varies quarter to quarter, but about two hundred forty-nine, maybe, two hundred twenty-nine?
Two hundred forty-nine per year? Thank you. I also wanted to touch on the last one that Danielle brought up, the renovations to the council chambers. Can we assume that you're doing the rebid because no one bid the first time?
I believe that somebody did, one person did, but it went beyond what the spec required, the money that we put there, so that's why it has to be rejected if I recall correctly.
We didn't have any qualifying bids, so we need to go again, yes.
And are there any changes with how you're bidding this time, or you're still doing the same amount, crossing your fingers?
We follow the purchasing rules, we go out to bid again.
At the same amount that we have.
There's no changes, Brandon, is there?
And what is that amount that you're prepared to spend on these chambers?
Remember, Mr.?
I appreciate it. I'll follow up if I don't hear from someone. I do think, obviously, these chambers have been around for almost a hundred years, and I've heard discussion at this body since two thousand and ten about making changes to make it more welcoming to the public. I would just say that, you know, you do have an option in the interim, because it seems like this is taking a long time, it may take longer. Right across the street, the county has a room that's designed for public meetings in the twenty-first century, and on your way up, you want to check, let's see, there's nothing going on there. And if the right person made the right ask, we could be in a much better, more comfortable space for these meetings, and I will note that it's now equipped with modern audio-video technology, so that the meetings can be automatically recorded, you know, shared with the public that way, instead of having to bring cameras and tripods into this crowded space. And I would say, whatever you do, make sure you include modern audiovisual technology in these improvements, so that you can finally, you know, get with the program that five other towns in Middlesex County and many more around the state have done, which is hybrid meetings, where people don't have to cram themselves into the second floor here, and drive here, and park here to be able to participate in meetings, but anybody with a mobile phone or a computer could just as easily participate. I brought this up before. I encourage you to look at Perdaville, look at Sayerville, I believe Cascadwe just joined the club, you know, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Egan, did you have something to say?
I said, I think you're off the subject, Mr. Cradaville.
I'm suggesting how the council chambers should be run.
I understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? Joseph, resolutions? Are we now, are we going to take a motion to?
Motion to accept the resolution.
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes, with the exception of ten bribes, thank you.
Do we know that? Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
At this time, we are getting ready for the.
Council President, before you open up the public portion, I have an answer from a previous asked question. May I get an answer?
Absolutely.
So the premium for the JIF for twenty twenty-three is four million, three, four million, three thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as we're getting ready, preparing to open the public portion of the meeting, I would just want to remind everybody again, please, address some questions to the chair. Refrain from disruptive behavior, with respectful language, and we're getting ready to start. So at this time, we are preparing to open the meeting for public comment. We have up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wishes to address the council, please approach.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. Of course, I would like to say to the public, sorry that I'm in and out today, that I'm not disrespecting anybody, would not hear your comments. It's just my day to take care of my mom at the cancer center. So like I said, after I do do my comments, I won't be able to hear everybody's, but I watch it with Mr. Cradaville's. No disrespect anyone, just my turn to take care of my mom with the cancer center. I have to say, I'm very disappointed in each and every one of you, you council members. Wow, you said a prayer, condolences to someone, but wow, how could you forget, wow, to say something on a good retired police officer from New Brunswick with Mr. Robert Hawkins, we known him as Bruce. Wow, you ought to be ashamed of yourself, due to where, what, a hard worker for so many years with New Brunswick Police Department, and not to say nothing? Wow, and I know you had to see it on Facebook, due to where Zax and everyone shared it so many times. You were a wonderful man. His funeral will be next Tuesday, but like I said, please, and I know the family asked someone on here, please, and I hope the police department takes courage and do it the right way, like you do any other normal police officer or firefighter when it comes to a funeral, where it was asked that, please, can the police be there and do this as a regular police thing, like you do for, I'm not to be funny, but a white one. And I'm very disappointed, due to where I don't see the same thing for Mr. Bruce Hawkins. Shame on you, like I said, racism. Then I will start, start off with just saying, due to where I did see the video, parts of the video with my son involving getting stabbed, I would tell you the first thing that I did not like, due to where, wow, that was at Hope Manor, due to where, what, my son had to walk out to, walk a few, too long to get to the curb, to get ambulance assistance, due to where, what, Hope Manor, I access before traffic meetings, due to where, what, the bars do not lift up when the sirens go off. I will say thank you to Sergeant Bobadilla, Officer, if I pronounce it, Sumatriyanto, he was in car nine twelve on Monday, was working with me, proving to me, was doing the video, and then I will say also thank you to Mr. Victor, as well our fire inspector, for taking the time and bringing the firefighters down there to investigate this serious situation, because, wow, if someone, I know it's a block from bad people there, but wow, someone has a major issue, due to where they can walk, and I thank them for their help, taking the time, listening to me. I thank you all for your, your help with taking me seriously. I noticed that something was, they did talk to him, due to where they have to leave the bars up for emergency vehicles to get through until further notice. I just wanted to thank everyone who had worked with me involving that issue, because I surely didn't like to see what I, what I saw through the videos. Now, just say thank you to Lieutenant Memmerming, as well who's working with me on the case, due to where my son being stabbed downtown, due to where I still have a few more things to get to. But like I said, due to where, I'm, I'm still, still, I don't know why it's taking so, taking so long, I'm waiting on the prosecutor as well. But then another emergency thing I would like to say, I cannot say Mr. Mayor Cahill's buddy anymore. The one I was talking about on Oxford Street, due to where I told the police officer yesterday, I, it was nine fifteen, he was over there, I say, please, if any of you are familiar with his wife or daughter, due to, please have an emergency contact number with the police department, due to where he just had major surgery, and like I said, it's a little scary, due to where, like I said, I do see things, like I said, I even cut his grass room, due to where how he's not supposed to be doing certain things, but for his safety. Then the other day, wow, he scared the daylights out of me, due to where, wow, he left his car running, the door opened, the keys in his house, the door closed. I'm like, wow, I'm praying something didn't happen to her. I'm running, looking all over for him, but he was okay. But I still say, like I said, due to where, he is a friend and neighbor that I do care about now, to look out for, so I say if someone can reach out to his wife or daughter, I know she's a doctor, to keep a family emergency number for, around for him, just in case there is an emergency in the area, even though I know he doesn't live there. But like I said, occasionally, I see, see him a lot there. He talks, he teaches me history, like I said, talks about the weather and all. I, I understand, like I said, what he's doing is not good, but I understand why he's doing it. That's his type. Everybody has their own type of therapy to do something, to keep yourself going. And like I said, I've seen it, but my concern is emergency contact for him. If you can speak to the family, if you happen to know him, please, thank you.
Mr. Daniel, I just want to mention, and thank you for reminding me of the days that I did not mention, he was an excellent officer. I mean, later in the years, he was working on my community school, so rest, maybe rest in peace. Thank you. Like I said, sorry, everybody, good night. Everybody have a good night.
Hi, my name is April McLaus. I live at one four three Sedan Street. Regarding your comments earlier about the Woodbridge Power Plant, you said that you didn't think it was the role of the council, or the council didn't believe it was the role of the council to pass a resolution to influence decisions of another municipality. And I want to point out that that's not what the proposed resolution would do. It's to encourage the state and the governor not to approve of this project, that they have the power to approve or not approve the air pollution permits. And I would say it certainly is the municipal government's role to act on behalf of its residents and their best interests, and that includes letting decision-makers at the state level know how our citizens in New Brunswick are going to be affected by a dirty, polluting gas power plant that is very close to where we live. And I do think that referring to it as the Woodbridge Power Plant, you know, we all do ourselves a disservice when we refer to it that way, because it is a polluting gas power plant that will affect air quality and public health across the region, including in New Brunswick, not limited just to the municipality that it happens to be built in. So I certainly urge the council to reconsider this matter again, and to pass resolutions standing up for the health of our environment and our community here in New Brunswick. I also have some thoughts about the ordinance that was on first reading tonight about the temporary closure of George Street. I do think that is potentially a wonderful thing to close off that street to car traffic. It can be great for the environment, it can be great for our community, but only if done thoughtfully, and I would say differently than how it was done during the pandemic. In the previous closure, all of the seating on the street was designated for specific restaurants, and so really only the people who were patronizing the specific restaurants were able to take advantage of that, that outdoor seating. And I think it is really important that, for the community, that there's open seating available for anyone, whether they choose to or can afford to purchase food at that, of those more expensive restaurants or not. And I think that there's a lot of potential for this to be a great community-oriented space, but only if we are making conscious decisions to provide public seating and public amenities for anyone, whether they are patronizing specific businesses or not. It's not just about the restaurants that you can spend a lot of money at, it's also, you know, if you want to buy something quick at Seven-Eleven, or Popeyes, or wherever else, because that's maybe more in your budget range, or if you just are passing through downtown and you want a place to rest, you should be able to do that. So I really do hope that decisions about the closure of George Street will take that into consideration. And then it was brought up earlier with regards to the city's budget priorities, the issue of housing in our homeless population. I do strongly believe that the city should allocate funds to help the population of people who are struggling with housing here in New Brunswick. Yes, we do have the Code Blue program, but that's a first step, and that's really a Band-Aid solution. That is not fully what we need. It doesn't solve the problem, and the program as it is, with the current funding allocated to it, is, I would say, you know, woefully unprepared to handle the problem that we're dealing with. There's, I think, about thirty total spots on any given night. There is a hundred, what, two hundred homeless or housing insecure individuals in New Brunswick at any given point in time. That's my recollection based off of the latest point-in-time count. So the existing program is not even well-funded enough to handle the volume of people that we already have struggling with that, that problem. And like I said, it's a Band-Aid solution. We really need permanent program support with wraparound services that will actually help people lifted out of the situation where they are housing insecure or on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening once again, Charlie Cradaville. Have to start by saying that the last meeting, Council President, you ended the meeting prematurely, and that's not acceptable. Your job's to keep order, conduct the business of the city, and to hear from the members of the public who come out to speak in this forum. And, you know, I for one came out to speak in the forum and didn't get the chance to, because you abruptly ended the meeting prematurely. And I would ask that for myself and anybody else who was deprived of the ability to speak, that you give us an additional five minutes at the end of this meeting. Would you be willing to do that?
No, but thank you for your.
Okay. Councilman Fleming, what do you have to say to the taxpayers about the cost that they have paid for your sexual harassment case?
I was happy indicating the past, he's a pretty, you know, make any comments today.
He'll have to someday. I remember a very boisterous speech about, I can't wait to have my day in court and be, you know, prove my innocence, and now we're talking about settling the case with taxpayer money and remaining silent? That's not going to fly. I do want to speak about the officer, Josue Plaza, who was suspended for eight days for intoxicated conduct. I asked two meetings ago, and still haven't gotten the answer, was his suspension paid or unpaid?
That's Michael. I take responsibility for that. Like, I knew that you had asked me that, and I completely, I gave you that, I gave you the answer, because I did follow up.
I'll look forward to that answer. Another question I've been asking, the notice of that major discipline, when was it posted to the city website?
Find out when it's.
That's exactly what you said a month ago.
I think we have, I wasn't this, I think you got an answer, but maybe it wasn't what you were looking for, but I will try to see if I did get the answer that you would do.
Yeah, there's a Attorney General Directive that requires the information to be posted on this, on the website for the police department by January thirtieth. I contend it was not there. I'm asking when it was actually posted, because it was deficient, and not by a few days. So you'll find out for me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I also asked what you have to say about the theft of a motor vehicle from the police parking garage. How can people feel safe about parking their cars in New Brunswick if even the police are getting their cars stolen?
Any other question, Mr. Cradaville?
Yes, I have many more. Okay. That was one that was already asked. I'm still waiting for the answer. You did answer Tony Caputo, to the best of your knowledge, is not a New Brunswick resident. You said he is a full-time employee. How many hours a week does he work? How many hours a week does he work?
How many hours does a full-time employee work? Are you a full-time employee, Mr. Cradaville? How many hours you work as a full-time employee?
Work more than more than the normal number of hours, but but maybe maybe John Clark is more the speed we're looking for, thirty-five is what John Clark says his job is.
Depends, you know, if he's a full-time employee, forty hours are his hours, so.
What are his hours?
Any full-time employee, forty hours is lost, and in his position, I'm pretty sure he salaries even more than forty hours sometimes.
Oh, okay, this is important, I'm going to hand.
You could also request that question, because you always have the answer before you ask, so you already know the answers.
Okay, so I'm passing out a document here that shows the home address of the New Brunswick Police Director on [BLEEP] Avenue of Cape May City, Cape May County. You can punch in this address to Google Maps, and you'll see that it's more than two.
You're supposed to be doing that?
More than two, it's supposed to be doing that, speaking of, for my five minutes.
The address, you show these addresses, he's paying them.
It's a violation of the law.
Mr. Chami?
Yeah, this can't be permitted in a public forum. Mr. Cradaville actually is probably subjecting himself to some civil liability.
Please, please bring it.
Do you stop that?
Bring it. So this address is two hours and ten minutes away from police headquarters. Does he work in New Brunswick, or does he remote control the police department from Cape May?
Anything else?
I asked you that question two weeks, two weeks ago, you said you'd get my answer.
Again, we told you, we wanted to know, because he lives in the police department, we gave you the answer, or as my father, he was only here to answer. So, and obviously, he's in the department, he was.
How does he get to work? Does he take a helicopter, does, you know, like, I'm serious, like.
Those type of questions, you are, you are very clever, and you are very smart, and you know how to make the sense, so if you're not interested, go ahead and find your job. You have the sense already, so go ahead and answer. If there's anything that that really, I'm going to get you with the other two, about the other officer, or anything related to the police department, put it in writing, and write the directory itself, or the public information officer moving forward, with anything personal related to the police department.
Okay, I think we deserve a police director who shows up to the meeting, at least, at a minimum.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Pete, I live over, sorry, what?
Good afternoon.
Thank you. I'm Pete, I live over at Livingston. I'm very concerned still, there's no official budget for Code Blue, we're just continuing to rely on the ninety thousand dollar grant from the county. I think it's been shown again and again throughout this past winter, that that is not an adequate fund, you know, we continue to see that services are not being funded correctly, you know, the facilities continue to be filthy, you know, we see arbitrary closures of the facility throughout the Code Blue season, and, you know, the problem doesn't just end once it gets above freezing, you know, some places they have Code Reds, where you can have, like, you know, when it's too hot out, maybe you need a place to go. The rain's been crazy, I don't want, I don't want to get, I wouldn't want to stay here, I don't think anyone else here would. I think the answer would be to have some sort of twenty-four seven publicly open shelter. Yeah, I think the money in the budget's there, especially we continuously giving more money to the police, soon enough, I believe, twenty million dollars, well, I don't think there's a single other sector on the budget that is getting that sort of funding. That is all, thank you.
Hello, my name is Still, I'm historic, I still live as well, Park Hobart. And I am very disappointed that you guys have considered again the resolution opposing the Woodbridge Power Plant, and decided not to support that. As April pointed out, it is, this is a matter before the state, the EPA has to make a final decision, obviously the governor could step up here and live up to his campaign promises. And the pressure does work for municipalities. Several projects were able to be halted in North Jersey because enough municipalities weighed in, and a number of, almost all surrounding municipalities already have. We are the outlier here. It's it's an environmental justice issue. New Brunswick, Middlesex County already has six power plants. Once that, once the EPA regulations are in place, this whole block, they're trying to get it in under the radar, because the law is passed for environmental justice, but the exact rules haven't been put in place. So since there's no rules yet, this is a clear case of, you don't, you don't see anybody trying to put another power plant in Hunnerton County, or Ocean County, no, they're all for us. You know, they're all for, for, you know, our kids that have a higher incidence of asthma, and even adults. It's not good, the quality of the air is already inferior because of the six power plants we already have, and obviously, a seventh one would increase, but just that much, and it's horrible, and it's it's not just, it's it's really bad, if you look at the emissions that would come out of there, and it comes to us. These things don't just, you know, at the Woodbridge Town Line, drop on the floor, this all comes to us, and surrounding, depending on how the wind is blowing, we breathe this. Our citizens get sick because of this. They can actually calculate now, they have a formula, they calculate how many, you know, how much premature death is the result of each of this stuff that, and there will be additional tons of it if it's approved. As I say, I'm very disappointed. I had a question I didn't get to before, the DPW and the parks seasonal workers, are all the regular positions in those departments already filled?
This is additional.
This would be in addition to, yes, DPW is, all the positions are full for, and in parks, those positions all will be full.
Before seasonal workers are hired?
Indeed.
Okay, because. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was, I understand that last year, it happened, that seasonal workers were brought in when all the positions were not filled, and that is not acceptable, under any circumstances. And I would also like to know if, okay, a couple of things, it's been said to me in the past also about the homeless situation, that we don't want to make it, you know, too nice for homeless people, because they've just come to New Brunswick to get the services, which is kind of laughable now, because we don't provide that many services, but there are a lot of things in New Brunswick, it is the county seat, there are a lot of attractive reasons for people to come here. So maybe in that consideration, it should be like a cooperative effort, it isn't fair for New Brunswick to pay for, you know, homeless people from all over in Middlesex County, maybe it should be cooperative with the county government, and maybe you guys could work on it together and and solve this problem, because the problem, I mean, the solution just can't be the hope that they go away, because where would they go? You know, if you don't, if you don't have a place to live, you need a place to live, and if you need other types of services, then you need other types of services, but just hoping that, you know, it goes anywhere else. And can any council member get their legal fees paid through that, through the premium that gets paid for insurance?
So.
Who's caller over the JIF?
Any, any employee who has a matter that needs to be considered defendant gets sent to the JIF, and council members are employees of the same.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Daniel, and I'm a homeless person. I've been trying to get in touch with anybody in the social services, and every time I call them, the phone just rings. Every time I, I get put on the answering machine, I leave my phone number, I don't get a call back. Also, I have cancer, and I've been fighting with social services, the hospital, the nursing home, you name it, I'm still in the streets, though, and nobody's trying to help.
When you say social services, you said you're talking about the Meterses County.
I've been here fifty-four years, and I haven't got any help.
Okay, we are, I'm, I'm, but what I will say is that if you could just, after the meeting, I will talk to you, because I have a care with somebody else in the local social services, so I will try to help you out with that if you wish, to see what it is that is going on.
Well, I'm saying, they are homeless people here too, though, in New Brunswick, I was in that Code Blue, I stayed in there, I was in a rotating shelter, all of that stuff is gone now, there's no one here to help us, and you, all they're doing is passing the buck, but what's going to happen now? We're going to keep passing the buck, and then I heard somebody tell them that they didn't even vote to put money in. Wow, when you know you got homeless folks out there, that's not right.
And like I said, if you want to know, we're the social services, let me know if the meeting, I will be there.
Sure, I will be here, definitely.
Hi, Jacob again, Five Seminary, and it was very interesting to hear Kate May brought, New Jersey brought up, because that's actually where I'm from, and, yeah, it's a little, it's closer to two and a half hours a drive on a long day, and it's, it's a beautiful place, but I know I'm going home in two weeks to Kate May. Will I be able to participate from Kate May in this city council meeting in two weeks? Will I be able to participate, ask questions?
We have people from all the towns all the time here asking questions, I'm requesting, I'm inquiring, and attesting, and making demands that they don't live in New Brunswick, so I don't see why not.
So when I'm in Kate May in two weeks, I'll be able to come here for five, and ask five minutes worth of questions?
Again, we have people at this council meeting that do not live in New Brunswick, but they come here representing our community, or just representing some, they're talking to us about different issues, and we have never turned them out, we listen to them.
So you keep saying come here, but I'm talking about actually in Kate May, New Jersey, which is two and a half hours away.
They want here, only to make it here.
So unless I make it here, so what you're saying is someone who lives two and a half hours away can't even come speak for five minutes in the city council, and yet they're expected to run an entire department, is that correct?
We can continue, but, okay, I understand that you wanted to make your point, but it's two different scenarios, but go ahead, continue, I don't want to take time over your five minutes.
Okay, yeah, so I guess if public servants, if public servants of the city of New Brunswick can live in Kate May, should I start advertising around Kate May for people to get jobs here? Because it is a beautiful place, believe me, people love it down there, and I'd be happy for them to start applying for jobs up in the city of New Brunswick, if that's an option. So maybe we can get back to that one later.
Now, let me, I want to make sure that people understand, you are claiming, you know, starting back in the years there, you have to even, you don't even know that, again, you have to be careful when you're talking about adversaries of your own, especially now, so you have to just be careful, you don't know, you are claiming that you're there, you have no, no, you have to warn us.
All right, so do you know where he lives?
They can't. If you don't say that, or if you don't say that, with the person, they're just being on, so go ahead, I'm going to continue doing the same thing, trying to, you know.
All right, so.
Anything to say, Mr. Cradaville?
No. No, I'm sorry, I'm asking a question.
Thank you.
Well, hey. I do request a little extra time at the end, because that disturbs.
I'll give you a second minute.
Thank you. So two weeks ago, we asked about having translators here to help with the Spanish-speaking community of New Brunswick, and you said you'd get back to us on that, where are we on that?
Actually, there was a new lady that said that she was going to contact me to talk about it, I'm still waiting for her to contact me and to discuss that.
So have you reached out to any organizations like New Labor or Coast Health between the past two weeks?
She said that she was going to contact, I have no knowledge of how to contact her, I told her she knows how to contact me, and besides that, like I stated at the last meeting, if there's any challenge with translation here, while the meeting is taking place, no translation, interpreting, you know, one, interpret, we, more than we do, we have people here capable of doing so in the meantime, and recognizing that it might be, the community knows also that they could promote those residents, that might need those services, they know how to reach to us, and they don't know, so.
So.
I can't wait for the new lady from, I don't know what organization, to call me, so we'll talk a little bit more about that.
So, but I guess a better thing to say would be to have dual translation, so that's, that people can't only just say things to the city council, but also understand what's being said by the city council members. I understand that you can help, and we have people who can simply translate what someone is saying, but also, it's important that they understand what their government officials who are representing them, who they are voting for, is important to understand in a public forum what they're saying, and I understand that even out here, it's possible, but these, these meetings are also recorded, so it's important that people who are at home watching recording, who maybe don't understand, maybe understand Spanish, that they are able to understand that interpretation. So I hope by, I hope by next meeting, or the following meeting, we have some progress on that.
Thank you. I agree, I agree, so if they say you have to, anybody has to, should have everything to understand and provide those services, so thank you.
I hope so. My other question is that, can it, is it confirmed that the, that the money that's being spent on the sexual harassment investigation by Glenn Fleming is being paid by the JIF? Because we've been talking a lot about the JIF, it's four point four million dollars. Is it confirmed that that is where the money is being paid from?
Mr. Cruz, maybe I can explain it before the byway, can you explain it again?
The byway, too.
The purpose of the JIF is?
The JIF is simply our insurer, they're a separate agency, they have a separate governance, I suggest you ask that question of the JIF.
So I guess my question is, though, that it's been, it's been public knowledge that the money, that the city of New Brunswick is paying for these allegations. Are they being paid by the JIF that you don't know about, or are they being paid by another organization?
You, you just might understand, we have a JIF, you can become a broker, right, insurance, so they are in charge of any claims against the city of New Brunswick, they are, we pay for them to take care of that, so it's one, so the JIF is the one paying, we pay a premium for all claims that are against the city of New Brunswick, and the JIF is the broker that deals with that for us.
So it is through, it is through the JIF, and I get an extra minute?
I added the extra minute. Thank you, thank you.
Hi there. So I wanted to get some clarity about the budget, why no money was appropriated for the Code Blue budget in 2023.
The Code Blue?
Yes.
You name it?
May.
Yeah, thank you, or you went here when we talked about it, the Code Blue is not on the budget, because the, the time to apply for that grant is not open yet, so we are expecting to apply and hopefully get again the money from the Meterses County, and then once that is granted, then you could add it into the budget.
Okay, so historically, it's been funded through a grant, like this over the last few years?
From Meterses County, it's a grant.
Okay, okay, I appreciate the clarity. I really appreciate what Jacob was talking to, as far as accessibility goes for these meetings, I, I get the, like, I get the attitude where it's like, well, you have it for homeless folks, right, like, we can help you after the meeting, for Spanish people folks, if you come by, they'll try to have interpretation at that moment, but I, I, I think we have to think about it in a more systematic fashion, we don't go out to try to invite house people to these meetings, we don't actively seek out there, like, I've never seen flyers anywhere like, hey, guys, city hall is happening, and we'd like to hear your opinions, you know, in Spanish, you're like, you know, going Facebook, you know, with those communities. I, I think it inherently in a systematic way discourages them coming, because there's a sense that it doesn't matter in the first place, and when it's kind of like, I, you know, we're all still trying to figure out some power of like, who can actually move letters to get things done, but for people who are working, busy, studying, all we know is come to city council, make our demands, you know, try to get, this is our, this is the way to interface with the city of New Brunswick and the issues that live here. So I also think that, like, that kind of maze, that intricate maze of different, like, levers and organizations that are able to, you know, who has the real power to make changes in people's lives, again, for working folks, for students, for homeless people, for people who speak other languages, it's such a, it's not a transparent system, it's a system that demands so much time to engage with in the first place, it's really difficult to kind of, I, I think we have to think about it in that fashion, where I've been trying to like, be like, well, it's not our business, it, it, for, to us, this is the homey place, right, we're able to interface in a meaningful way with the city, so I think that needs to be considered. And I, I think also, like, it, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth when there's a sense that, like, well, there's no power here to make these changes, you're demanding, well, we have folks speak to, you know, the Code Blue conditions several times, we have a folk talking about how now the rotating shelters are closed, the Code Blue shelters are closed, because, you know, nothing. are closed because you know, nothing, um, kind of available for them at this point and there's no sense that there's going to be any help coming because they're just on their phone waiting for hours and hours of social services. Uh, I, I actually think you guys do have power. When you guys are the ones that are kind of the ones who are okaying this budget, uh, it, it's unclear to me why we can't simply say no to it and insist that money is taken from different departments and put into other departments. We've indicated, you know, people here have indicated this several times at previous meetings, there are 20 million dollars put into the police budget. 20 million dollars. 20 million dollars. Um, one fraction, 1/20, right? 1 million dollars, but that means like less fire cars that can patrol the streets, less like, uh, riot gear, uh, less guns, whatever. Um, and I'm sure all my, my Rutgers students know that like, the police don't really stop any crimes. We've only gotten more and more details about break-ins and assaults and whatnot over the last few years. Like, and I've seen the New Brunswick Police Budget Department, uh, Police Department Budget kind of inflate over the last few years, like not by much, but you know, a factor of a million. So, so like, let's say we fund it like we did in 2019 or whatever, 2020, just go back to 19 million, that's a million dollars you could free up to actually pour into social services. Um, I, I just think that it's like dishonest in a way to indicate a sense where like, you reduce it down to, well, let me help you after the meeting, well, let me get interpretation now. You guys have the power to at least make your voice heard about where this money is going. That's something real, that's material, and that's the way you can make actual impact in these people's lives. Um, so I, I, I think that that's something really important to consider. Um, and I, I, I think that like, demands for things like 24/7 shelter, you know, affordable throughout the whole year, that's not like, that's not undoable. You guys could free up this money by looking at, you could free up the money by looking at where it's going. Um, and it's a necessity. And, and when we look at it kind of like, um, I, I believe another individual, um, and I got to do it, but another individual speaking to the fact that like, you know, there's more homeless people coming, or like when we increase the, you know, the budget for social services, like people are gonna, houses are gonna flood into like New Brunswick. Homeless people are already increasing in number because as we spoke to last meeting, rent prices are, you know, already getting to a point where people can't afford them. They're already being priced out. So it's, again, just like a very dishonest kind of argument because you got like, it's kind of like, we can't make conditions better, we're gonna just get so many homeless people like pouring in, but everyone's already becoming homeless. The people are already in a position where they're suffering because of like their conditions that are being created, you know, systematically by the city. Um, and that repetitive to my first point, that it's a systematic and not an individual issue, it's a fixable issue and there's power here to fix that. You have the money to fix it and you should take that seriously.
In terms of the community, we have, some of us work in this community every day, in and out. So we have a very good, um, understanding and working relationship with the community, especially the Latino community. So it has been something that, it has been done for years. So, uh, anytime if there is, the community knows that these doors are open, that they could be here participants, so it's a statement that this is not a welcoming, that we don't, you know, that we don't work with the community, that we're not aware of these challenges that the community has, it's, it's a little bit strange, you know? I just want to point out that we are very, very aware of the pulse of the community and we work with the community every day. So in terms of language, again, I understand, we have something in place, you know, with those community people that we work with, in place. This council had never said that we're not going to have the, the ability to have the bilingual meaning or anything, this is something that we have a system in place. If that system is not working, it's going to be revisited. And but don't, uh, we hear from our community, those directly that lives here, that are directly impacted by any decisions that we do. So I just wanted to be clear, make that clear. Yes, sir, your name, please say.
Uh, Sebastian, um, Rutgers student. So I was gonna ask a question, um, so the COBlue fund last year was funded 90,000 dollars, right?
Correct.
Is that incorrect?
That's correct.
That's correct, 90,000 dollars. So, next question, is there any way to see how the police spend their money, their expenses report? Is that available online somewhere?
First, the expenditure, is that available? Is there any information, is there any information in the community?
Okay, so, I'm wondering, okay, so I haven't seen this information. So if we're constantly spending more and more money on the police and our problems are not being fixed, even taking out like my friend said over there, 1 billion, um, from that budget and putting that into something, adding it on to the COBlue fund, why, why isn't that possible? Why aren't we doing that? Giving homeless people shelters 24/7 and giving 365 days a year, why aren't we doing that? Why is that not something that we're appropriating that money for? There's no reason for the police to have the constant 20 million every day, every day, when they're not stopping crime, when they're not doing anything of the sort.
Anything else?
Alright, that was a question.
I'm just, is there another question I can answer here?
No, 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 no discourse.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna ask you questions all night.
So if, okay, so, I'm a, I'm a member of the, I'm not a member of the community, but I work with a member of the community sometimes. And so I want to ask, why is the council being reactive to these like questions of injustice or something? Why are you not, why are you not taking initiative? You're public service, you got elected, you ran for office, they voted for you, why are you not, why are you not do, doing what's best for them? Because if, even if it's, this is not something crazy to ask for, I, there's members of the community who can't understand what you're saying in this public meeting, in this public forum. Why is that not being taken, like, why is that being taken into account?
As I said, we only take it into account, we have a system, we have the community groups in the community and the community knows that they could come and, and be heard. But like I said, I took it to consideration and thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate it.
I, I, like, how long has this town been Spanish-speaking? Like, this has taken too long?
Well, if you might be right, it's, this is, you know, we are, we represent all communities, right? So we do have a majority who are Latinos. Uh, so yes, uh, we have made changes, you know, we have some forms that are in bilingual, we have done some other, uh, system changes to address that. Again, thank you for bringing up about the meeting. It's something that I take very seriously because I have been in this community, working with the community, the Latino community for 35 years. So I would take that lightly. Uh, and if you look historically, from 10 years ago to now, the Latino community wasn't even participating in the meetings like they do now. So we are, again, we are moving forward and I thank you for bringing it forth. You know, sometimes you need that reminder, so I appreciate it.
Hello, Cal voter, a Rutgers student. Um, you mentioned before that you had a, a system in place for translations, I was already working and it's not gonna work, you would fix it. But I just wanted to clarify, was that system, um, requiring Spanish speakers to bring an interpreter with them and have that interpration done?
In the past, when we have helped, when we have spoken to them, they were coming to the, to the meetings, they had indicated that, we always ask, you know, interpreter is needed, and they always say they bring their own interpreters, you know? So that's why I was saying that, that was the system that was in place and it was working. So if it needs to be revisited, it will be revisited, you know? But that's the, that's the way we, that we have been working with the community in the past.
Because this is a kind of a system, it seems more like more hoops for the Spanish-speaking community who's yelped you out of necessity and out of accessibility at these meetings. But, um, furthermore, I just wanted to point out that it seems so hard to do anything in the city until it comes to expanding the police budget. Um, so it's 20 million in funds and also extra grants on top of that, yet there's not a 24-hour shelter and there's no money allotted to the unhoused community or any money allotted to the housing crisis. Um, I just think it's very telling and, I'm sorry, um, I just wanted to say that it's not so much, it's easy to point it as an issue, paint it as an issue of it being like, um, it's, we can't focus on the unhoused community right now, or we don't have the funds, or it's not something we can really focus on. But this is the reality, the reality is that this city is focusing on the unhoused community, as in that they're actively criminalizing being homeless and actively making being unhoused more dangerous in the city and it is disgusting as well.
Brittany, Livingston Avenue. Unfortunately, I'm still a sanitation driver for the city of New Brunswick. I just wanted to add, um, because I really do hate wasting my time down the barriers, as you can see, it's a waste of time. But, um, I just wanted to add to what Charlie said earlier, um, the students were on the back of the garbage truck because there was not enough people to work for that day. Um, I noticed that the city likes to lie and cover up what they're doing behind the scenes. So, you know, even well on before I started coming down to these meetings, I started collecting a lot of pictures, videos and voice recordings and things because I'm just gonna keep building that to prove that you wrong, that there, these things are actually happening behind the scenes. Um, you know, wow, to hear the budget for the police department, I have no issue with the police department, I'm sure they probably need the money, but I hear there's other areas that need it just as well. Um, you know, especially with here in the new garbage truck, that's not gonna solve your problem. Adding more garbage trucks when you can't even keep up with the garbage trucks that you have now, that has nothing to do with the mechanics and their work, because they're great mechanics, they're also underpaid, is because you don't know what you're doing with your budget. You can't keep up with trucks that you've had higher for 35, 40 years and expecting them to run and then buying one truck and thinking that's supposed to add to the solution. Um, this, as far as the seasonal workers, that is also a lot that you've supported today as well too, which is very disappointing. They were hiring seasonal workers, they called them seasonal workers, to come in even though they said they had no money in the budget to boost the pay of the people that were working there. And I'm not just talking sanitation, I'm talking parks, I'm talking water department. All of these people deserve raises, you know what I mean? But they said they didn't have any money in the budget, but they hired a seasonal worker. So let me give you a little insight on that. When you hire a seasonal worker, they're not getting pension taken out of their check, they're not getting insurance taken out of their check, or any of the other things that are being taken out of their check because they're just seasonal workers. So that means they're being paid more than what the people that have been working there for years are being paid until they're hired permanently. So you said there was no money in the budget? Yes, there was enough money to hire temporary workers to cover up whatever money you're spending and putting in anywhere else, I'm not really sure what's going on, but that wasn't the solution because now you have more workers, you're adding another truck that's probably not even gonna go to us anyway, which makes complete, no complete sense. Um, as far as the houseless community, um, all we know about that in the sanitation department is we clean up their stuff. We get calls and then it's just go clean up all their crap, not give them an opportunity to take that stuff somewhere or we just take it and throw it in the garbage. Um, it's just disappointing to have to keep coming down here and, um, watch you guys, you know, be nasty, be racist in the faces and it's a lot of rules, don't say this and don't say that, but you know, you don't have any answers, so of course it's frustrating. You don't know anything, you call somebody else, they don't know something, isn't that your job? Is you getting paid for that? So I'm not understanding what's really going on. You know, once again, I want the community to know, anything that I've said is true, trust me, I have the proof. I'm just building this, you know, for legal purposes so that once it comes out, it's gonna come out. Because I could have got a lot of people fired from what I have in this phone. So conversations, videos, recordings, pictures, even those kids on the back, I have recordings. Why would I want to send it to Michael Jewellis or send it to somebody for them to see? For what? What are you gonna do? You're not gonna do anything, they came out there and picked up your garbage. What's the point? So I'm just saying, this is ridiculous to sit here and listen to you live and then you say, oh, you need to keep it down, you need to stop saying anything. One time up, five minutes, can't handle everything that's going on here. These people are coming down here being repetitive and saying the same things over and over. Don't you want to solve some of these problems so you don't have to see any of them? Because that would be my goal. I don't want to keep seeing these people. I would try to get something done so they do not keep coming down here. And maybe you would have people supporting to fix this place up, but fix it up for what? So you can be more racist, so you can be more disrespectful, so you can ignore the questions and, uh, somebody's living in Kate May and making 10 times more as me and I live in the same city, can't even afford to, to live out here? You know, it's, it's just ridiculous. We understand that you don't care. We understand that there's nothing you're gonna do, you're just gonna whisper behind everybody's backs and you're not gonna do anything. We get it. But eventually, the truth is gonna come out. And I just hope that I get a front row seat to see who goes down with the ship. Because it doesn't make sense. The budgets are not adding up. The people that I see that are homeless every day that I see while working, they say they 'd rather stay outside. I can't say that what's going on in COBlue is going on because I've never been there, but they say they'd rather sleep outside. And it's, and that's what I'm sad to hear. It's, it's just really disappointing that there's nothing that we can do because we thought coming down here would help, but it's not.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Yoshi. Um, I'm sharing the same concern that there is like no money for COBlue and yes, we've heard the explanation that you haven't applied for the grant. But considering that the 90,000 dollars spent for 2022 was 8.09% of the police budget, like surely this, uh, council, this city, um, can find, and I saw that there was quite a surplus, that you can fund this without a grant and easily do so. Maybe we need to talk a little bit about responsibilities because, um, as you would like to think that, uh, homeless people just kind of, uh, you know, pop out of nowhere and then come, come here because New Brunswick is so great with its services. Um, the, the fact of the matter is, a lot of people here who are houses, who are homeless are that way because of the redevelopment projects. One of the most recent, in recent memory was from the Hope Ford Grant that demolished the memorial homes, which literally destroyed people's homes from under them. And the reason why they are here is because they don't have the means to go anywhere and, uh, you know, I mean, I should talk a little bit about those responsibilities. If you're going to build these, uh, luxury apartments that don't house people, um, are they just like, uh, you know, visual curiosities? Like, wow, look at this, New Brunswick City, shining, beautiful tall buildings instead of like, you know, maybe provide homes for people? Um, at the very bare minimum, uh, the new, city of New Brunswick should be providing shelter, a 24/7 shelter, because that's the very, very basic responsibility that I think New Brunswick City bears responsibility for. Thank you.
Sweet thoughts, if anyone else has to speak.
My answer is.
Yeah, so I'm gonna talk more about police because I don't like them. Um, but also just because.
Can I have your name here?
Loop? Yeah, uh, Rutgers student. So multiple folks were talking about the worries or just experiences with wellness checks, whether it be, you know, pointing AR-15s at folks who are having mental health crises, um, or in regards to sanitation department, y'all literally had armed police officers go to people's doors in retaliation because, you know, they want to organize, they want to get better wages and whatnot. Um, I don't know if y'all have been, uh, looking at the news in the past couple months or especially in what's been happening in Patterson, New Jersey. Um, so Najee C. Brooks, who was a part of the Patterson Healing Collective, which was a violence intervention program that collaborated with the hospital, was it St. John's, I think? Um, he was having a mental health crisis, the police came with riot shields, they came with AR-15s and they murdered him. They murdered him. He was having a mental health crisis and they murdered him. Like, there's no such thing as community policing, these people are armed and they will kill us. We need to have this money redistributed into housing. Like, policing is entirely reactive. How are you gonna tell me that people armed, occupying neighborhoods, arresting people for bullshit charges, pulling them over for bullshit reasons is going to help this community? We need houses, we need more money to the COBlue program and we need a 24/7, 365-day shelter program. I remember Keith Jones was, was, you know, saying like, oh, you know, like all these students, all these people, they're like, uh, you know, when it comes around wintertime, like we're worried about the houses folks, but as soon as summertime comes around, like, you know, we give up, like, no, we're gonna be, we're gonna keep on coming here, day in, day out, until we get these demands. Simple as that. Simple as that. It's unjust, it's ridiculous, and it's violent. Simple as that. Thank you.
Just a point of information for the council's benefit, uh, the CO Blue program was funded by the city budget prior to the grant, as you remember. Um, and, uh, there's been some discussion about zero funding outside of CO Blue grant. Um, you'll, you'll see in the budget that in approximately twenty twenty, the city instituted Department of Human and Community Affairs, the budget for that, and that department has the charge of CO Blue, Code Red, um, the different, different, uh, support structures the city offers. It, it's a total of about one point one million dollars for that department. So I just, as information, it's not zero dollars after the grant, it's more than a million dollars.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.